Last Wednesday, the zoning board approved some lot changes. And the numbers are going to be a little bit different than what is in the resolution. I don't think that matters for the MOU, but I wanted to be clear. I'll give Mr. Gark the-
I believe you're talking about lot size changes?
Lot, lot number changes.
Number changes.
Previous lot 102 is now lot 104. Previous lot 103 is now a lot, going to be lot 1.05. I don't know that that matters, but I wasn't sure.
I don't think it does. I know Mr. Tenetta did say something about you had to have a conversation over size with planning or whatever.
Yeah, okay. I just, I just noticed it in the resolution number and I wanted to just-
No, that's fine.
-bring your attention. Otherwise, we're really looking forward and would like to come at your June meeting and talk about the project, if that's okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity, even though I was six minutes late.
Not a problem. Chair on attain a motion at the minutes of the pre-meeting conference and regular meeting of May 13th, 2025, and a work session of May 20, 2025, be approved as submitted.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion by council? Seeing none?
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Rich, we're going to put that to the end and see where-
We'll put it at the end then.
Yeah, okay.
I present ordinance number 2025-41, ordinance amending ordinance 99-7 as amended, chapter 537 of the code of the city of Island entitled property maintenance, which is ready for a public hearing.
Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-41 be taken up for public hearing and open to the public for discussion.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on ordinance number 2025-41? Seeing no one, chair on attain a motion, public hearing on ordinance number 2025-41 be closed.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes. Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-41 be taken up for final reading and adopted according to law.
So move.
Second.
Discussion by council? Seeing none?
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2025-41, ordinance amending ordinance 99-7 as amended, chapter 537 of the code of the city of Island entitled property maintenance. With a vote of five yeas, this ordinance is hereby adopted.
Mr. French, please submit ordinance number 2025-41 to the mayor for his approval or disapproval.
Yes.
Thank you.
I present ordinance number 2025-42, an ordinance to amend and supplement ordinance number eight, which establishes classification and compensation plans for the city of Island, various board titles, which is ready for a public hearing.
Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-42 be taken up for public hearing and open to the public for discussion.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to be heard on ordinance number 2025-42? Seeing no one, chair on attain a motion, public hearing on ordinance number 2025-42 be closed.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes. Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-42 be taken up for final reading and adopted according to law.
So move.
Second.
Discussion by council? Seeing none?
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2025-42, an ordinance to amend and supplement ordinance number eight, which establishes classification and compensation plans for the city of Island, various board titles. With a vote of five yeas, this ordinance is hereby adopted.
Mr. French, please submit ordinance number 2025-42 to the mayor for his approval or disapproval.
Yes. Ordinance number 2025-43, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2001-2 to allow for up to five additional five-year renewal terms for an existing cell tower lease between the city and Sprint Spectrum LP for space on a municipal tower located at 382 West Butler Avenue, which is ready for a public hearing.
Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-43 be taken up for public hearing and open to the public for discussion.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to be heard on ordinance number 2025-43? Seeing no one, chair on attain a motion, public hearing on ordinance number 2025-43 be closed.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes. Chair on attain a motion, ordinance number 2025-43 be taken up for final reading and adopted according to law.
So move.
Second.
Discussion by council? Seeing none?
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2025-43, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2001-2 to allow for up to five additional five-year renewal terms for an existing cell tower lease between the city and Sprint Spectrum LP for space on a municipal water tower located at 382 West Butler Avenue. With a vote of five yeas, this ordinance is hereby adopted.
French, please submit ordinance number 2025-43 to the mayor for his approval or disapproval.
Yes. I present ordinance number 2025-44, which is ready for a first reading.
Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-41 be taken up for first reading.
So move.
Second.
Should be 44.
Forty-four.
Just for verification, 44. Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2025-44, ordinance authorizing the acquisition of 2040 Maple Avenue, block 2502, lot 51, by purchase or condemnation for recreational purposes pursuant to NJ SA 40:61-1.
Chair on attain a motion, that ordinance number 2025-44 be passed for first reading and a public hearing be held on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, at 5:30 PM.
So move.
Second.
Discussion by council? Seeing none?
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
I present ordinance number 2025-45, which is ready for a first reading.
Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-45 be taken up for first reading.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2025-45, ordinance of the city of Island and the county of Cumberland, New Jersey appropriating $4 million even from the Electric Utilities Capital Improvement Fund to provide for certain improvements in connection with the implementation of a municipal landfill non-condemnation redevelopment plan.
Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-45 be passed for first reading and a public hearing be held on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, at 5:30 PM.
So move.
Second.
Discussion by council? Seeing none?
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Present ordinance number 2025-46, which is ready for a first reading.
Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-46 be taken up for first reading.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2025-46, an ordinance to amend and supplement ordinance number eight, which establishes the classification and compensation plans for the city of Island purchasing agent.
Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-46 be passed for first reading and a public hearing be held on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, at 5:30 PM.
So move.
Second.
Discussion by council? Seeing none?
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Present ordinance number 2025-47, which is ready for a first reading.
Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-47 be taken up for first reading.
So move.
Second.
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2025-47, bond ordinance providing a supplemental appropriation of $3,397 even for improvements to the Joseph E. Romano Sports Complex in and by the city of Island in the county of Cumberland, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $3,397,000 even, bonds or notes of the city to finance the cost thereof.
Chair entertains a motion, ordinance number 2025-47 be passed for first reading and a public hearing be held on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, at 5:30 PM.
So move.
Second.
Discussion by council? Seeing none?
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
I present resolution number 2025-271, resolution authorizing the exclusion of the public from a meeting between the mayor, city council, city clerk and staff, business administrator and staff, city solicitor and staff, chief finance officer and staff, and special counsel Damon Tyner Esquire concerning the negotiations of a contract with, excuse me, of a contract in which the public body is or may become a party and authorizing the disclosure of minutes of said meeting as provided herein.
Chair entertains a motion, that resolution number 2025-71 be adopted according to law.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none?
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes. At this time, we will present a resolution to the mentor on the green. I don't know if everybody's here, but if they're not, we waited till the last resolution to put it on. We will present it and if someone's representing them, we'll give you all the certificates for the mentors and the participants. I'd like, yes, I'd like to present a resolution, recognizing, resolution number 2025-72, recognizing Mentor on the Green, a nonprofit, using golf to empower our youth and their life skills in our city.
Resolution number 2025-272 should be adopted according to law. You need a motion?
Motion.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. I don't know if anybody knows anything about this program. I know a little bit about it, being a golfer. You guys can-
You're going to come up?
Yep, come up and get a picture.
Can I just get a vote first?
Let us finish the vote.
Let's just get a vote, that's all right, that's fine. No discussion with a vote, Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead. Thank you very much. Come on up, guys. Let him get a comment. We've got to go back, Rich, and do consent.
We'll go in the consent.
No recess, but what I will do is call their names once they get in, let them sit down first.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. It's all right, yeah.
Okay. Bobby, have them come in and sit down first, and then if Coop's here, we'll let him speak actually on what they do, so we can put it in the record. Okay. Recognizing. Guys, come on in, sit right in the first row, first to second row. Come on in, everyone.
Yeah, sit up here.
Plenty of room in the front row. Plenty of room in the front row. Coop? Yeah, come right up here at the, at the mic and just tell us a little bit about your program and what you guys do and how you're trying to get it accomplished, et cetera.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for actually inviting us. Our program is called Mentor on the Green. It's a golf mentorship program for inner-city youth. This is a program that started in July 2024 at the actual Eastland Golf Course with Rob Bono. We took it inside at the Arm Center indoors. So for 10 weeks at a time, we create a program for kids from all over the county. It's not just violent, Millville, and Bridston. We had kids come as far as Atlantic County, Gloucester County, and as well Salem County. We try to keep it at a minimum of 50 kids, only because we don't have adequate transportation and it take a lot to move the kids around. Recently, a few months ago, we got two vans donated to us, two 15-passengers from Union Baptist Temple Church. And we created a fundraiser to be able to take the wraps off the van and add the wraps on to the van. And we did a great job with the fundraising. You know just as well as I know, wraps are expensive. And Monkey Wrap helped us out, but we still had to pay a pretty good penny. So I just wanted to bring the kids here because at the end of the day, it's all about exposure. It's not just about the game of golf, it's about the game of life. None of these kids have golf program or golf courses in their neighborhoods. I mean, I grew up in violent. And the same golf course in Eastland is the same golf course still out in that location, but I grew up around Forest Street. I grew up around Camelot Courts at the time. So to see golf at their age is amazing thing because it's not just golf, it's the networking, it's the people that's making decisions in your life and your schools. And what we want to do is give them the exposure of knowing what goes on the golf course, as well as what goes off a golf course. And with that being said, each of our programs, each week, we bring an expert in. It can be one of you guys, it can be a doctor, it can be a judge, it can be a fraternity member, sorority member. And we allow them to sow back into our kids because, like I said, some of our kids go to CC Tech. Some of our kids go to some great programs, don't get that wrong. But as a whole, our inner-city kids don't get that, they don't get that exposure. So the ones that are at the CC Tech schools in the better school districts, we allow them to sow back into their little ones. The program's from nine years old to 18 years old, so we have different levels. This is actually our fourth 10-week program. And it's amazing because each semester, it goes stronger and stronger. Wildwood Public Schools is the first school that adopted us as an after-school program. So we joined in with Ascenda, NJ4S, 21st Century, and Mentor on the Green, and we completed a 10-week program. Now they want to bring us back into a full school year. So this program is actually growing. And the way we're going to continue to grow is we're going to connect with the EOF program throughout the state of New Jersey through different colleges and allow them first-year generational college students to actually run an after-school program, so we can keep passing the torch down throughout the state of New Jersey.
Passing it forward.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So I appreciate you guys, I know how busy you are. They had the chance to be in the parade yesterday. It was my first time in the parade. They learnt a lot from Mayor Fanucci, Senator Mike Tester, talked to them and sewed back into them. So this is, this is what we need them to be exposed. And 85% of the kids just keep coming back, so it's hard to get new kids in the program anyway. And I love it because we want to raise them out.
Yep.
So.
All right, Coop, we're going to call the, the names of the mentors, and I don't know everybody, so I'm going to let you actually come in here and you can hand them out.
Okay.
As you call them. James Cooper. Trust Cooper. If they're here, you can come up and get them. If not, I'm giving to you, Coop. Tanya Ford? Eric Cooper? Is Tanya here?
She'll be on her way. Oh, there she goes, okay.
Derek Cooper? Tanya, congratulations, thank you. Dan Sinclair?
Dan and man.
Okay. All right, we, we, we're not going to hold it, we're not going to hold it against them, except in football, basketball, baseball. Yeah, that's it. Congratulations, thank you very much. Zakiya Wise? All right, you guys can come up top and we're going to call the kids' names.
There's there. Right back by the seal.
India Ray Cooper? She here? India Ray?
No, that's one of, they, they will be the mentees now.
Yes. That's it. Bryce Goldsboro? Jaden Gonzalez? Jaden, come up, get yours. Dior Scurry? Here? Congratulations. Darius Finch? Donovan Finch? Joseph Capriotti? DeShawn Couch? Jeremiah Couch? Dorian Purnell? Dalen Purnell? Devin Austin? Devin here? Leiris Viola? Is that right? C-Rock Williams? Did I say that right?
Yeah.
All right. That's 34 years teaching in Atlantic City. You figure some of these names out? Elijah Robles Lopez? Darrell Logan? Sahir Hickman Lewis? Zavion Hickman Lewis? They, they look like brothers. Twins? Wow. Ledarian Spencer? Levante Spencer? Yes, they're brothers. Lawrence Spencer? Part of that brotherhood. Jaquan Ledbetter? Amira Morris? Amira, I'm sorry. Amir Simmons? London Ziegler? Akia Ledbetter? Akai? I'm sorry, I apologize. Zania Walker? Elsania Walker? Or is it Elsaniat? I got that one right. Marzine Johnson? We need them. Camaria Taylor? Kamora Lee Brown? Derek Cooper? Did we miss anybody?
Kamora Lee Brown?
All right, Bobby? We need to, uh, we need to get names for these. All right, come on up here. Whoever I missed, come on up here. Just one? You guys come up here. You got to come and talk to me for a second, so I can write your name down. Spell your name for me. Last name? D?
I, no, B.
B, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll get you your certificate. Who else, who else didn't get their name? Your name? Spell it for me. I-A-H? Last name? Ford? Okay, thank you. Your name is? Spell it. Last name? Figaroa? F-I-G? Go ahead, keep going. U? E? R? O? A. Your name? Spell it. O? N, last name? Okay. Your name, man? Spell it for me. C? Z? O? A? N-A-Y. That I got. Coop, we will get those four gone, we didn't change.
He told me, that's awesome.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You guys can kind of like slide up.
Don't hide your faces.
Eyes.
Put the certificates down.
Yeah, don't hide your face, but put your certificates up. Well, you can snap too.
Everybody ready? Doesn't matter with me.
group of children, and they do come from all over, not just Cumberland County.
That's all right. You're helping kids, that's what it's all about.
Yeah, so I wish them all the best.
Councilman Gomez?
Wanna share the same thing. Thank you, Johnstone School, for sending your, your children here to, for the flag salute, and then the mentors on the green, I love what they're doing. You know, I was, I was a product of Center City and what James Cooper's doing with that, that group, you know, making them believe that, that they, they too can, can have a chance and an opportunity to do great things, so thank you for everything you do.
Councilman English?
I'm gonna echo what my fellow council member said, and also a special thanks to James, because that's, that's a gentleman that pretty much traveled up and down the East Coast, but he never forgot where he came from. He's proud of where he came from, and he's proud of his hometown Vineland. And as we get older, you know, I, I've known him the better part of fifty years, and.
You're not that old, Scott, come on.
Hey, think about it, I'm, I'm hitting sixty, but the, really, the bottom line with, with James is, he's not afraid to bring an idea to anyone, and he asked for the support, and it takes courage to do that, and he's got a lot of nose, but he never backed down, he kept coming back, and you, you start and wonder, where is the next James Cooper? And hopefully, we see that today in, in one of these young kids that was, that were sitting in front of us. So, to see a mentor like that for the kids, that's, that's good stuff, and that's really what it's all about, because you know what, we're just passing through time here, and to see the next generation starting to stand up, and kudos to James for keeping the dream alive, which, good man right there. That's all I got.
Councilman Vargas?
I just would like to add to that, that I'd like to say thank you to the parents for taking their time to bringing the kids to, to Mentor on Green, and it's important to recognize them, because at the end of the day, it starts in the family, it starts at home, and that's the foundation. And to add to those mentors, to that family, it increases that. Again, I could only say also that this is important, but education is also follows. To me, never forget that education, because that's one thing they can't take away from you. And you may fail at, what do they call that? Call, putting?
Golf.
Golf. No, 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 they're putting it in a hole, whatever, whatever that means.
A hole in what?
Oh, well, no, I know that, but you know what I mean. But that's, that could be successful, it may not, but at the same time, education is one of the most important things to me when I'm dealing with the youth. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. Congratulations to Emmanuel Mercado on his retirement from the police department, and I wish him well, and he's young enough to get another job.
Good for him. Yeah, again, congratulations to Officer Mercado and his years, and we wish him well and his retirement. You can't say enough about a program that we just had here. I taught in minority schools my whole life, most of it in Atlantic City, and, and the teaching staff and things of that nature during that time played these roles, taking kids to games and getting them job interviews, and how to act in a job interview, and how to dress, and, and Mr. Vargas is right, and education also plays an important role, but life skills, how you make, how, how you can make it in this world is very, very important. You need the education, but you also have to have the life skills to get through the, the times that are rough sometimes, without getting in trouble, and that's a big thing, and that's what these kids are, are starting to learn about. And again, the connections and the networking and things of that nature, it's all part, part of being a successful person. We didn't learn in my generation networking until I was in college, and then you learned how to network. So, these kids are learning how to network at a young age, and they'll have friendships the rest of their life in this group, and as they all progress, they'll network even more to make each other successful, and that's what, what is a good thing about it. The one thing, there's a meme that was actually on social media today, and it said, never be jealous of someone else's success, but help them, and that's what we should, all should be doing, helping people become successful, because their success is ours, and it makes this place a better place to be. So, thank you very much for the mentors and everything that they're doing, their parents, and the kids themselves for being receptive to getting that help. All right, we need a, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Dr. Arthur?
Yes.
Councilmember English?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
President Spinelli?
Yes.
Have a good night, everyone.
Six fifteen.